Time is now. We've called the meeting to order. Congratulations to all those that were elected or re-elected a few days ago. We'll start with department head comments. Commissioner Mace.
Okay, the, uh, first we yield the ARP money that we had left. Susan and Bruce went to a conference and they were explaining there that those monies do need to be committed. We talked about that last time. Roy gave us a figure to try to cover to make sure that we had enough committed so they can't come back and say, "Well, you didn't commit those dollars, they gotta give them back." So I've got a list here of things that we have done to this point. Some of those, I understand, are just regular maintenance issues, but as long as the funds are available, when we get through with the other things that commissioners have planned to do here, that we are good with whatever needs to be done with that stuff, make sure we use it all. So, start off with the doors on the courthouse, on the inside doors. Now, the outside doors look good. The guy did a good job with the outside doors. So, the inside doors still need to be done on one side, just the side where the person last time put whatever that finish on there. That needs to come off. And, uh, the plan's to match them, to match the outside doors, the natural stained look of the outside doors. Uh, those would be in the range of, um, $6,000 to $6,500 for all of them. They have all of them done. You only have to do one side instead of two sides. Um, I don't have an amount, but I know, I guess we do. We know it's in 130,000 to 135,000 for this, uh, soft, uh, software that we need to do, the EXO stuff. How do we get a contract? And that's what I have. Commissioners don't know who that comes from. Who supplies a contract to us to sign to commit those dollars to?
Well, Oliver's heading that up, right?
I don't know. That's why I know we're doing that.
Aren't you? So you'll get a, no, they'd be through their, they, we did, we had a contract for the last one when we did that.
Yeah. We just, we have a schedule.
They know.
Okay. Okay. We just need to make sure we get that. That meant 130,000 range. We-
That's what I thought. I thought you had one, but I'm not sure, but-
Just an amount, but I've not seen a contract for any of them.
Yeah, and he signed it last meeting.
The contract for it?
Mm-hmm.
I remember discussing, but you're actually committed to extra dollars. Good, okay. Was it 135?
134.
Okay, good. Okay. That is taken care of then. Um, on the sewer project in the north, uh, we committed 25,000 to, uh, pay for the state, uh, revolving fund and the redevelopment's requiring one more PER, um, one more plan that they can look at to make sure that the way that we have proposed, uh, to, or they have proposed to do the sewer project for Marshall Bloomingdale, Turkey Run, and, uh, and the middle school is the best option, which really frustrates me that we have to spend money to do another PER just for them to say, "Yeah, that's, the other way's a better way to do that." But that's what they're requiring. It's their game. So we've committed 25 to that. Um, the other two things that, to me, are regular maintenance issues, but, but if we have, whatever funds we have left, and they'll be substantial, they can go to that. The highway garage roof and, uh, the jail copper. If you remember, we broke the copper project, which was going to be about a million bucks, down to three, three phases. The first phase, to get it about in that half million dollar range committed, we'll buy all of the, uh, the metal. We'll buy the valves and all the valve work. So that'd be the major hump. And then the other two phases of the next two years, then, we pick up the remainder at whatever level you guys choose to fund those as it goes, goes forward. Uh, comprehensive plan that we've all, um, discussed here is going to commit about 50, between 55 and 65,000. She gave me a list here to give you, you guys, of what kind of timeline it's looking at, so I can just read what she's given me. Um, the RFPs were sent to 11:12. Their deadline is 11:15. Submittals are due by four o'clock on the 20th of this month. Uh, they're going to distribute those to you guys on the 21st. They have a recommendation here of selection committee on the master plan. The person, that would be Beth Martin, Cindy Todd, Jackie Butler, Kurt Landzom, and Greg Lorman. That's just their suggestions, if that's what you guys want to do as well. Then they'll bring the recommendation to us then, on the, on the 2nd of December, and then we can negotiate, uh, whatever numbers it has to be finalized, and then enter into that contract agreement by the 16th of December. So that should be covered before the end of your deadline. So that's all the ARP money funding that I am aware of as a discussion, unless you guys are aware of something that I, that I don't recall. Um, highway superintendent job, of course, uh, that has, we're going to post that job. Um, Buck Vandiver is acting as, uh, highway superintendent right now. If you remember last time, we only had three applicants. And the other two that we did not choose, neither had, none of them had, uh, road building experience, and that's what our goal is, but we may not get that filled. We may not find somebody willing to come for what we paid, with those skills that we would like to see have to build roads. So I can't tell you where that's going to be. But I would request, uh, if you remember last time when, um, Mike Wood did that, we just gave him a stipend, because it came up all of a sudden when Randy got ill. But, um, Randy was making, um, about 55,000, year-plus insurance. Uh, Bucky is at whatever he makes now, but he doesn't make as much as that position was paying. So our request would be to you guys to visit that, and it would be in the $25 an hour range. Susan, you remember what he makes now?
$21.50.
$21.50. So if he's gonna do the, which he is doing, and he actually is doing a pretty good job. We met, in fact, I just met him this morning again about stuff. So if you would consider that pay rather than waiting for a stipend at the end, or however we do that, because we don't know how long it's going to take if we even ever find someone to take a job. Although, I've been informed of a couple people that are looking for the job, but as of now, neither one of them is that road builder that we're, that we're looking for ultimately. But we do have two competent people that have discussed it with me, are interested in, in pay. I mean, in the job, uh, mostly depends, I think, on what pay is. And Randy was in that 54,000 range and, uh, plus insurance. So I don't know that we'll get somebody skilled and competent at that, that pay range in today's world. That's low. But that's what we have to deal with, and let you guys change the range that you want to work in, in there. Uh, the CDL program has been a ultimate frustration for me. I've been working on this since summer through Work One, and I can say it, and they're good people, but I can say it, as far as Work One goes, no one seemed to have a clue how this program should work. And I got sent to different people. Someone was going to call me, they never did call me. I called them. They were going to contact somebody else. Soon they found somebody could do the program, they found somebody who could do the program, I gave them a list of names, and they contacted me yesterday and said they need a list of names, and how many people there are. I said, "I've given that to you." And so, oh, I'm waiting for a call. I'm supposed to call the lady at Area 30 in Greencastle, and then I'm supposed to take that trans, uh, that information and transfer it to a lady from Work One. My question is, why can't you just contact her directly and get that worked out? Why is it going through me to do that? And I thought it was your program that we were signing on to. I, so I don't know why we're having to push all this. The hope is still that we'll have six or seven highway workers that will go for this program, the CDL, uh, from the state, and it's the next level thing. And, uh, the way that works is the county has to pay for the CDL plan, and after six months, you'll get reimbursed by the state for that program. If we did that, we would require from the employees some kind of hourly commitment, uh, time commitment. Typically, I've talked to Clay County and others who've done that. Typically, it's a two-year commitment, that they stay with the, with the highway department, that two-year period. If they leave before that, then they have to pay back a appropriated amount of what they, what they got paid for, for them. My question to you was, if we do that and we accept either program going, how do you want us to do the funding to pay for that? Do you want us to take it out of line in the highway budget, or do you want it someplace else to put that? How do you want to do that? I'm guessing, and it's just a guess, but typically, I think CDL programs, uh, commercially, are in that $5,000 range. So if we're talking six or seven, we're talking 30, 35,000 dollars.
My answer to that will be it'll come out of the highway fund.
Okay.
And then we'll maybe have to make a line and transfer and all that kind of stuff. We can deal with that when that time comes.
Okay. So we don't have to worry about that, it'll be covered just as matter of course.
Well, yeah, but it's, I, it seems cleanest, best to me, that it stays within the department fund that it's, that's associated with.
And six months state reverses.
And six months state reverses.
And right back to same line.
Yes. All we have to show is that they're already employed and, uh, and at what level they're employed. And I think when we took the pay last year for truck drivers to 19, I think that covered what their, their minimum requirement was for, for pay. So should be good to go. Of course, we'll get all those details. The only other thing that I have, well, two, two other things. Let me pass this out to you. I, I joined the Humane Shelter Board only because, uh, that entity needs to get professional. And we had the discussion last night. It is a good, a board of good people who care of good things, but it's just a bunch of good old people sitting down doing the good old things. We need contracts, we need obligations, we need structure. Uh, so this is a Sullivan County agreement between Sullivan County and their Humane Shelter. Uh, just want, you don't have a Friday, I just want you to have it so you can look at it and see if you have suggestions. I'll get it to Nick so Nick can look at it as well. Vermae County has one with the Humane Shelter that's much more specific. They get into numbers of dogs. Like after 370 dogs, a price of $75, and it's 13 some other dog. We don't need, in my mind, we don't need to get into those kind of details. We just need a general plan here of what kind of services we're going to get. And then, uh, then we decide what we get. I think right now, we give $30,000 a year, and Vermae County gives $50,000 a year. I think they came last year, no, they went to Vermae County for a $5,000 increase. I don't know how long it's been, 30,000? I don't know if we need to look at it. I don't know.
Are you sure it's 50 over there now?
Yeah, that's what they told me last night.
All right. Well, they jacked it up again a number of times then, because we were even at 30 with them.
Okay.
Or since that point, there's never been a single soul from the Humane Society ever asked for anything different.
And that's what I told them to do.
So that's what it is. And that's what it is in the next year's budget too.
Okay. And I told them, "But it's already, already done." So don't look for any pieces this year, but if you want some, if you need more next year, just bring the numbers. They don't have, they just don't have records of cost, they don't have, or they don't do any of those things of professional medical entities.
I know there's a lot of things changing over there, and it seems like most of the change is for the good.
They are.
Um, but, you know, there has been zero communication from, from them, and we, you know, it's a decent outlay of-
It is.
-from the county taxpayer-
Yeah.
-to give money when they were basically unaccountable for it.
And that's what I told them. I, I was surprised, I know George started this years and years ago, I'm surprised that the state board of accounts has never required a contract to show what you're getting for the money you're giving. Because we're not allowed to make donations.
Well, you weren't, you weren't here, you weren't here for the, you weren't here for the state audit, uh, closing meeting. Bruce was, for representing you guys, but that was one of the findings, was they, they randomly pulled things.
Okay.
That's how the board of accounts works with that. And they pulled, uh, they had four items that they identified-
Okay.
-that were expenses without supporting documentation.
Got to have it, yeah.
So, that's not the only one-
Okay.
...that sits out there still that way, but, uh, they just haven't found that one.
Are the other ones things we need to fix?
Uh, one, one of them's redevelopment attorney, we'll de, we'll deal with that. Um, I don't remember what they were. Uh, we'd have to look in the audit report. They, they, they were, they were nothing, nothing that's not, that we can't overcome easily.
Yeah, they're not, they're not questioning, I'm sure, the integrity. It was just, we need documentation.
They were easy ones to deal with.
Yeah, good, okay.
They just never picked that one out, but we should have it.
We should. And we will have something, we talked about that again last night, and really, it's a good group of people, they just never had to be accountable. I mean, they're, they're okay. Financially, they're okay. They get good building projects, uh, in, in the plan, the building fund, they're, they're okay financially. They just need to get organized. They don't have, they don't use quick.
Well, those people are volunteers.
That's all it is. They're, they meet, they hire up somebody that-
Is out of sight, out of pocket.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll work on that, but just look at that, and if you have any tweaks you want to that, then just get it back to me, and then we have our next meeting next month, which is the first Wednesday in December. I can take those, um, tweaks back to them and see what they need to change. Or if you're okay with that, let me, let me know that, let me know that as well.
All right.
I think, that's all I've got. Let me check real quick.
About health insurance.
Oh, yeah. Health insurance, good. Um, I'm probably, I can't believe we didn't have that down. We actually came back, well, we could have a zero increase. Uh, health insurers did very well this year. If you remember last year, we took the midpoint, um, attachment, uh, with the understanding that if we met, uh, fully, uh, the expected claims, we would have been about 130,000 in the hole, but we had that in, uh, reserves. We did not have to meet to do that. In fact, we'll have some surplus. The only change you have more making in the plan, the only change, would be the, uh, re-insurance supplier. He's changing company, they're all, and they're saving us significant money. So, we could do a zero, but if you dealt with insurance, well, I can't even really, taking you zero is really not a good idea because it's going to have a double bite to it. If you have sufficient funds in your reserves and you could take a zero increase, inflation is going on anyway. So let's say inflation's 4%. So now you've not addressed that. So next year, you're going to have to make up that 4% cost that went on, where you were setting back here at zero, plus you'll have to plan for the 4% of the next year coming, so you're probably looking at an eight or so, if that inflation saves a four. Our recommendation then, first off, the employees will take 1% because we're still marching toward that 80-20 point. And so, I think now we'll go to 83-17 is what we'll get.
82-18.
82-18, good. So we're only a couple of years away from having that done. And, uh, then our recommendation on top of that would be half of what inflation was, so we were recommending a 2% increases.
To just raise the premiums 2%.
It'd be 2% on us, but actually 3% on the employees because they have that 1% they're taking over on that, on that march back to 80-20. So that'd be our recommendation here.
What do you all think about that? Are you good with that?
More than reasonable.
That's reasonable.
Okay. Okay. Well, I don't know that that would be okay, and it would be okay.
Well, we're good with that.
When appropriate, it's in the budget.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, we can cover that, that'd be good.
Well, I think you probably, probably plan on 5% so that it just-
It's five in the budget, so we put, so, yeah, I know, I just spent the other 30%. I know, I know. Well, we'll give you, well, that's a good deal though, that's, that's great.
Yeah, the plan performed well, and our employees performed well, so it's, it's going to be okay.
Great.
If you could let me know, I believe I got a, I got a Zoom meeting, Legislative Committee at 10. What you decide with Bucky, how to pay him, how, if we can take it to the higher month, uh, weekly rate, I mean, uh, just hourly rate, so we know he's getting all the time instead of waiting for a stipend. We'd just like to know where that is, or whatever you guys want to do on that.
Um, so there's, that begs some questions, because Bucky's hourly-
Yes, he is.
-and, uh, Randy, or any highway superintendent, is salary.
Right.
So, is Bucky going to still be eligible for overtime?
Good question. And we can negotiate with them. I would think not. I would think if you're taking the interim superintendent position, you could take the duties associated with that, that position, and then you wouldn't be doing the overtime. Because Randy's pay was based with, um, the understanding, I would think, that there will be some extra hours, that's why you're getting the extra, extra bucks. That's just what I'm thinking on that.
Well, I'm, I mean, before we make a, you know, I want that-
Yeah, that's the easy-
To some extent, I want to see that in, you know, I want to see that some kind of a plan that we can then say, "All right, there's a," because I just figured it out, because there's going to be something, some salary ordinance amendment stuff with here in just a little bit. Uh, this year, uh, you take, you, your number with Randy included longevity and all that stuff. Take all that out, because we're talking about the salary. It was 50,558.
Okay.
If you divide that out just by 52 weeks and 40 hours, it's easier to get it. It's about 24-31-
Okay.
-an hour. Okay? So with that being said, that would put, if you did it hourly, would put him at that point. Or, this is, I'm just talking here, fellas, if you can chime in, he can be moved to that position and paid salary at that rate. Instead of trying to set an hourly rate to do it, and that'll end that conversation, because I, I'm not, I'm personally not sure I'm going to be excited about putting him up to that hourly rate and he's still then eligible for overtime. And I'm not saying he shouldn't get overtime, that's not what I'm saying.
I understand. And that's okay with me, as long as he understands that if he has now been moved to the superintendent position, that may change if we find someone in our, in our pursuit for the post position.
Yeah.
It'll be interim.
It'll be interim, and he'll be paid less salary.
He can go back and be paid out of that, and then you guys will decide whether you-
He'll, he'll be okay with that.
Moving back from interim, or strip the, the title interim off, or whatever, I mean.
So that's fine, if you want to do that.
So you're just saying, just moving to the, to the, Randy's, as an interim position then?
Uh, you know, that's, that's a nice option.
That'd be a simpler thing rather than-
Personally, I think that's just-
But you should make him understand that's, there's no overtime.
You're willing to do that, so you ought to get that pay.
There's no overtime, but now he would be eligible, because Randy was eligible for a long time.
Yeah. I agree with that. That'd be okay.
He would get that eligibility.
Right. Well, we could, they could just do that over there.
They can do that, yeah. They don't need us. It's going back to where Randy's salary was, that's getting ready to happen here in just a little bit.
Then, he now is a road foreman, wouldn't have a road foreman. I'm suggesting moving Mike Woody to road foreman, if that would be okay. Move those two positions up.
I guess it's another interim though, because they're all interim.
Absolutely, until we have to, if we have to.
Then they go back to their, I mean, you can do that, I think that's what they need to earn.
Okay.
I don't necessarily have a big quarrel with that, um, either. We did not fund a second road foreman, or second foreman position. I have no intentions of doing that still.
Okay, then I'll, uh-
But you can move him to both.
I understand, and what I'll do is we'll move him to, uh, Bucky to superintendent at the superintendent's pay, and then we'll move, uh-
Excuse me?
Mike, I'm assuming it'd be Mike, but someone, but I'm sure it'd be Mike, to road foreman, the road foreman's pay.
But just make sure they understand their interim, and you guys decide differently.
Absolutely, yeah.
And if that's somebody different from the outside, they all move back to where they were.
They know that. Yeah, that'd be part of the deal, they know it's interim. Yep.
Okay, well, that's all I said.
That's easy enough, thanks.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Well, don't say we didn't have a pay here either.
All right. I noticed they have been doing a lot of ditch work.
They have.
I saw they were doing on, um-
That was before-
Bubbling Station Road, they were ditching.
It was Luke inspired that. You know, Randy was very reluctant, and I've known Randy all my life. Randy did a good job with what he had, with the swatches that he had. But, uh, brush cutting too, we bought that new brush cutting machine that we would not have without Luke, so it's, uh-
Keep cutting the ditches.
Let me address, let me address one thing too on that, because I was asked one time what took so long about, uh, about changing superintendents. Actually, there was no extra time in that at all. You wouldn't have any weight knowing, of course, but in our due process, our due diligence on trying to make a, a decision on that difficult situation, uh, we had to wait for a report from the state that was coming, and it finally came. Came on Thursday afternoon. Soon as we got that final piece of our investigation, I scheduled a executive meeting. Executive meeting requires 48 hours notice, business hours notice. So we got the notice on Thursday, we scheduled our executive session as soon as we possibly could, which was Monday, before our commissioner meeting, and then after our discussion at the executive session, and we moved into regular session, and we made our decision there. So there was no dialing, there was no waiting, there was no holding off anything. We were waiting for that last piece, which we finally got on Thursday, we were notified by the attorney that it was, that's where we were.
Okay. All right, anything else?
No. You think we need? I got to go to Zoom meeting, but, yeah.
Yep, that's fine. All right, we'll see you. Katie?
Um, we are finished with reassessment, and we have an IBTR hearing with the ALJ Mike Smith on Wednesday, the 20th, for Donbrow. Marilyn will be here for that hearing. We're going to use the jury room, I've already scheduled it, and, um, it's a call-in, so we will call in, and we've got, we've submitted all of our exhibits. Donbrow has submitted over 200 pages of exhibits, and, uh, we're going to have a Zoom call today to go over everything, and at our hearing next week, we have one from 24, page 25, going to Pita Boa. Um, the gentleman had built a cabin, is how we picked it up, um, and he was getting a homestead deduction, so he was living in it, but he's telling us it was not livable. Well, you can't have both ways. You can't have a homestead deduction and tell me it's not livable. So, um, and now he's building another home on the property, which he did get a permit for that one. So, we're, we're going to hear it at Pita Boa.
Questions? Mary Alice?
Nothing here. Still scanning, almost done with all the books that we have left to scan, and then they'll be on the computer.
Sure.
But, um, still at it.
Good deal. Beth?
Um, I think Jim updated you already on my report, but I have, um, just real quickly, um, I have seven first notices that were sent out, 15 first notices left, left to go out pending Nick's approval of the letter. Um, I don't know if Jim addressed the comprehensive master plan that we're getting ready to do.
He talked about that, yeah.
Okay, and then, um, did he recommend, the recommendation of the selection committee?
He mentioned, he mentioned them, yes.
Okay. Um, we have to find out for sure if they're willing to serve. And then, um, other than that, I think we're going to go, Nick's going to set up, um, hearing dates for the seven that have gone out pending, me going back out and seeing if they've made improvements. If you have any questions regarding properties you're getting calls about, please don't hesitate to call me or email me, and let me know where those are, and I'll be glad to go out. My field day is typically going to be on Friday, if I don't have enough, plenty of office My field day is typically gonna be on Friday, if I don't have enough, plenty of office work to do. So, I'll go out and check on this Friday, the ones that I've already issued notices for, and then we'll pursue getting a hearing set.
Alright, thank you very much, you left your jacket, Mase, you better need that.
Can we, can we talk about that committee that you were talking about at the point?
Do you wanna talk about it?
No, we don't wanna talk about it.
We'll talk about later.
No, no. Chris?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's the twenty-four annual barter board.
He has color, take it.
Yeah, he put a pretty picture on the front, I don't expect. Next, next thing I put out for you guys, I'm gonna put a pretty picture on it that has no use of any kind, just so we can bring color for you.
Go ahead, Chris.
This big project we got done this year with a fold wifi for our modern and full hookup site. That worked very well, I can adjust the speed through with Bloomingdale, so on our feed season, I can boost the speed up. When it starts to slow down, I can slow the speed back down.
Is that popular with the guests, I mean, as far as having that?
I think I had two complaints, and that's because their camper was acting like a shield against the, the signal.
Uh.
That, our campers, so. Um, we also offer online reservations now, they can book twenty-four seven, up to three hundred and sixty-five days in advance. Um, as a matter of fact, we are actually sold out for the Bridge Festival for twenty-five, for the modern and full hookups already, so. Um, dedicated to shelters, I've friends in Janus Craft, for other years of service, volunteering, always helping with fellow campers. Uh, it's now named Craft Shelter. We're still putting on, um, water shut-off valves dropped apart, so you don't have to shut off the entire water supply. And then, one of the projects I'm looking at for next year is, um, upgrading some of the perimeter sites to modern sites. And repairing playground equipment, and installing a boat shelf to stick around with.
Very good. Very good. Any questions for Chris? Alright.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Stacy?
We have no updates, we'll present in December our annual recording presentation.
Okay, alright, thank you. Uh, public expression, Matt?
Nothing to say.
Congratulations on your election, I look forward to you taking my spot. Oh, I had contacted Kurt Landzum about the staffing at the extension office, and he could not be here today because of another meeting. So, he emailed me, so I'm just gonna read the response. Um, think you know that Christie Jacob transferred to Vigo County, so we're without a four-H educator at this time. So my question was, where are we in the process to, as far as filling that position? So this is the answer. Uh, let's see. The position is supposed to be, this is, this is Landzum, the position is supposed to be posted thirty days after the vacancy. I've talked with our area director, and I was told it was delayed during an internal absence at the university level. The posting will stay open until the position is filled, typically after a couple of weeks, or depending on adequate applications. There, they will begin a screening, screenings for the position. I've had a few people, this is here again, express interest and hope some of them apply. If anyone knows of a person that would be a good fit for the position, please encourage them to apply. Uh, he was told by the inverse, or by the area director, that the posting should go live this week. So it had actually not been posted, so I, which was, I was a bit disappointed to hear, but hopefully they're on track to get it posted. So that was that. Okay, moving on, minutes from the October meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes is pretty good.
Second. Motion been made, exact to approve the minutes from the October meeting, all in favor? Alright. Reappropriations.
Um, this one is a check received for damage to one of the ambulances, it's five thousand dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Motion to approve the reappropriation. Motion been made, exact to approve the reappropriation, all in favor? Uh, additional. Alright, so this is for, uh, basically it's juvenile detention out of public safety. Um, the sheriff's department is the, the holder of the funding bucket for juvenile detention, but they don't make that decision. Probation makes that decision. Um, and they have been exceptionally busy, uh, with this subject this year. Um, I was reached out to in October, or in late September, uh, by the, by the magistrate regarding this. And, uh, at that point, um, the, the projection was early October, they would be short forty-five thousand dollars. And knew of a couple more that may very well be coming, so, uh. We don't fund this anywhere near this level. Um, it's, this is an anomaly, I hope it's not the new norm. But it is a, a significant anomaly to have this many, uh, juvenile detention cases going on. Um, so, with that being said, that's what this is for, it's entirely juvenile. Was that most of it when they have to transport with Vincennes to the, to that. Yeah, there's mold. Places we use. There was, uh, a case, um, in the last few days that went to, uh, Terre Haute. Does they have a facility? There's one.
Vider Juvenile, Johnson County, um, I don't know that we use Vincennes anymore.
I don't know, there's some, some, maybe some possibly too, is there?
Vincennes got pretty expensive, but used to, that was the only place we could get it, and then.
Right, and to kinda comment on the, the frequency of it, um, I wouldn't get your hopes up in.
I, I'm not.
In terms of it going down, in terms of their activity level, and this year has been an anomaly, but.
So we're just arresting that many juveniles, is that what's happening?
Yeah. And, and some of them, you, you just can't give them.
Right, oh, I, yeah.
Some of them have been pretty extensive criminal backgrounds at this point.
Some of them, their parents are on your request.
Yes.
We don't have a whole lot of choice.
No, we really don't, the funds are there, I mean, even with, even with next year's budget and public safety, I, it's, there's, there's a reserve there. It's being built into it, into the fund, um, so it's, we did, we did have a conversation about transferring, but, you know, we don't, we don't. Particularly in public safety, we don't leave a lot of room for interpretation there. And, um, we have pulled basically all the EMS out of that, and it's all almost entirely, well, it is entirely sheriff's department, but we don't. Once, you know, when you're talking about meals, and you're talking about, uh, uh, medical and dental, which we all the time are struggling to hit. And then you throw this detention one in there, you know, where are you gonna pull it from? I mean, so it's, it's work becomes, they'll, they'll use pretty much everything in that fund.
The choice.
Yeah, so, anyway, that's what it is. Okay, any other questions on that?
We approved the additional.
Second. Motion's been made, exact to approve the additional appropriation, it is eighty-two thousand, I don't think I said that, all in favor?
Aye.
Pay the jury?
I can motion to pay the jury. Second.
Motion been made, exact to pay the jury, all in favor? Monthly reports, you have in your packet, the cash flow statement from the auditor, you also have a report from my clerk, is in there as well. Uh, moving on, monthly reports, redevelopment? Uh, redevelopment did meet, um, in your packet that I handed around here before we got started, is the TIF annual spending plan for twenty twenty-five. It's a new state requirement that the redevelopment commission has to generate a spending plan for the TIF districts. And then it needs to be presented to the fiscal and executive bodies of the forming entity. And it was also presented to the Rockville Town Council, since they are a co-member of the commission. Uh, this would have matched to the dollar, your, the budget that we adopted. Um, two hundred thousand dollars of that's labeled in the bond proceeds, lease financing, tax anticipation warrants. That is for town reimbursement for the Forty-One North Sewer Project, that will come in under that, we will not have to do that much more with that. Capital expenditures, um, this would, it's listed at one point one million. Um, that's for equipment repairs and new construction for the bank building. And professional expenses, four hundred and fifteen thousand, that's for professional, technical, legal services. Uh, it is amendable, so with the fact that the bank building probably will not close now by the end of the year, this will get amended. Um, because these numbers will need to be increased, and we will, uh, particularly the, uh, capital expenditures line, because we will not have paid for the building by then. So, uh, with that being said, that has been presented, uh, I will go back as the president of redevelopment commission submitted this. Um, we also, uh, passed a resolution through the redevelopment commission, allowing the commission to go into debt if necessary. For the bank building with the debt to be repaid from the TIF districts, that was then submitted to the commissioner for their approval. Uh, which they did at their November fourth meeting. Uh, we also, uh, re-upped our revolving loan fund, uh, the grant funding there. We had to basically say we would keep doing it, um, and that's it. Okay, coronal security did not meet.
What commission did not meet?
Basically, we heard their plan report. Uh, solid waste?
Yeah, we did meet, and, uh, they have the, uh, basically the recap of the entire year. And just for your general information, uh, in Park County, uh, they did collect six thousand, six hundred and fifty-five pounds of electronics, uh, this year. That's down a little bit from last year, but up from two years ago. And then on the tox away day, um, the county picked up sixty-six thousand, one hundred and four pounds of various, uh, tox away material. And this is up, uh, about eight thousand, uh, pounds from last year. And, uh, overall, from Putnam and Park County, uh, the average tonnage that, uh, or the annual tonnage was eighty-nine tons. Of recyclables and waste that, uh, they collected this year, so.
How's that distribution between the two counties?
Um, they don't have on the, uh, the annual here, uh, what the tonnage is, so I couldn't tell you for sure, so. But I can tell you, Putnam County on the, uh, you know, on the tox away, they had ninety-six thousand pounds, and we had sixty-six thousand pounds, so. Not too far.
Pretty much in line with the funding, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to new business, the salary ordinance amendments. Okay, there's, frankly, two amendments to salary ordinance, one for twenty twenty-four and one for twenty twenty-five. And these are in light of recent, uh, situations, um, the highway department, we have, I present the, uh. The amending of the, uh, highway superintendent, uh, salary back to the level it would have been. Uh, should Randy still be, um, in that position. So that was adopted initially for twenty twenty-four at the level of fifty thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Uh, it was amended in the summer to seventy-five thousand, and I proposed to reverse that amendment, put it back to where it was. We adopted in the budget, and they adopted salary ordinance for twenty twenty-five, a number of seventy-five thousand for that position as well. Again, uh, I propose that we add the five percent that was given, or that was granted to employees across the board, salaried employees across the board. Uh, and make that a new number for twenty twenty-five, uh, three fifty-three thousand and eighty-six dollars. So basically, we're just undoing what. Undoing what we did when they hired the last. When they hired the last one. Yep. Comments, questions? And you can always, I guess, if the time comes, if they hire somebody that merits a larger, you can revisit that. It can always be revisited, it can always be, uh, a case can be, uh, presented to us. Right. Um, on, on adjusting that salary as fit, but it's going to be put back.
My suggestion in the future, that you all, I won't be here, but that you, any of those things, that you make sure there's documented evidence of the actual.
As you recall, I asked for that this time. Well, I wouldn't do anything until you have documented evidence that there's a need for that, instead of. No, that's entirely the purpose of this, right? So that's my recommendation.
So you need motion to approve those two.
Salary amendments, yeah.
Also move.
Second. Motion been made, exact to adopt the two salary ordinance amendments for twenty-four and twenty-five, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you wanna talk about Flutter's engagement letter? Yeah, this is actually, I requested this in light of what we actually talked about briefly from the board of the council audit. In that, uh, they found that our, uh, redevelopment commission attorney prior to Bob, uh, that we never had a written agreement with. Um, never even crossed my mind, but it's true, we didn't. Uh, so I had asked him to generate one, uh, my position is, is that we will deal with this in January when we do our appointments. Uh, but it's informational, um, basically it says he will, uh, perform, uh, all the requested services at a rate of three hundred and sixty dollars an hour. However much we use, what we pay for, nothing more, nothing less. Cause there's no retainer. No retainer, we do not pay a retainer. He's been well worth it, in my opinion. We're using when we need to, I mean, it, it's not cheap, right? But we don't, and we don't use them anymore than we have to, but we need it at times. So, yeah, that is just for your information, so it's in there. Okay, we have a tort claim that's been in our packet, that, uh, apparently an incident with any made at the jail. So I'm sure that's, the commissioners are, assume submitted that to the insurance company for preview. Southwest Park, they've submitted their required paperwork, is that because they're issuing bonds?
This is by statute, they have to.
They have to.
Let the council know.
Know, let us know. Didn't that take a pause? I don't know if they're still doing it or not.
Yeah, I don't know.
I know it took a pause, cause they got enough signatures on the petition, didn't they?
I think there was, I think that one took a pause, and they all of a sudden found another six hundred and fifty dollars.
Which may be a GO bond, so.
That is a different, is this for the gym project, or is this the?
No.
Oh, okay, alright. Oh, okay, alright. Fair enough.
The gym, or the gym took a pause.
Okay, well, we acknowledge the receipt, Dan. You already discussed the TIF spending plan. I did. So we're ready to talk about the TIF, the lit summation? Yeah, I got a couple of things, I'll just roll right into the seventeen eighty-two if that's. Sure. Um, we received notice last night, uh, that our lit change was accepted. Even though we didn't quite. Even though we didn't quite follow all our rules. Uh, in your packet of stuff I gave you myself, was the letter that I wrote up to them. Um, long and the short of the matter is this, is that they, the legislature changed the statute. I guess it was effective, uh, July first of twenty-three. We did not do one of these in twenty-three. Um, I had followed the memo that they sent out, that I had used twice prior. Um, and they send a new one every year. But it now also requires two, or three other steps to happen, is number one, you have to notify every other unit in the county that you may change your income tax rate. So, madam auditor, put a note in your calendar that sometime in July of next year, that we send one of those regardless if we're gonna do it or not. Um, the second thing is, if you actually do it, then you have to send that you did. And the third is, is if you wanna change your lit levy freeze rate, you have to ask for permission from the Department of Local Government Finance before you do it. Now, along with that came the ability, which was new, that you could lower your lit levy freeze rate below the required amount of collection. So if you have to, a million dollars of, of required collection, you could set that rate down to be below that if you had sufficient funds in your stabilization fund. Which we do, that's why we keep doing this. I did not do this calculation to that level, I did it down to, for the sake of argument here, a million, a million dollars, a million and then a thousand dollars. Just slightly above it. Um, I see no reason to exhaust that at this point. We went back and forth a number of times, we did the rest of the other things that was always there, we have our sign ordinance, public, or the proof of publication, the public hearing, the whole nine yards that we have to go. Okay, sent it in, had a conversation with them again, and since we did not lower that below there, they said. If you will write up your, what you did, and how you did it, and what your amounts are in this, and what the calculations were and all that. Then we will see if we can get it to go through the legal staff up there. So I did that, it's in your packet. Um, and last night, we got notice that, they said, okay. So, uh, the lit changes will take effect, January first. Um, the, any effect to the local units is that the towns will get a little bit more, uh, lit edit money, uh, than they would have. They will see no change in their lit levy freeze, because we're properly funding it, and have plenty of stabilization money to fund a, fund a shortfall. Um, so that is finally there. So, we got that done. The last, the night before last, we received our seventeen eighty-two. In this conversation about lit levy freeze, I found out that I made a mistake in the budget. And, uh, which is, well, I realize that's difficult to believe, but. Shocking. Shocking. Uh, we adopted the statewide nine-one-one fund, uh, in the red at fifteen thousand, nine hundred and five dollars. I don't know why I submitted, I don't know why I did that, I honest to God, I can't say why I didn't notice that, but we did. Um, I provided a response to our seventeen eighty-two, and, uh, asked them to increase the revenue for the back half of twenty-four by ten thousand dollars. And for twenty-five by ten thousand dollars, both of which will be under actuals and under historical trends, cause I sandbagged that revenue a little bit. Um, and so it will then get reinstated at the adopted amount, uh, which will be, uh, fifteen thousand, nine hundred and five dollars, nine hundred and one dollars more than what we. Um, so, from that, we did get, everything else was approved. Uh, we had a submitted budget, and these are only in the DLGF, uh, governed funds. Um, a submitted number of seventeen million, three forty-two, five sixty-nine. It was approved, now this is before we changed the statewide nine-one-one, it's seventeen, three twenty-one, three ninety-four. The only difference in that, between that is, between the, uh, nine-one-one is debt service. Uh, I always set them a little bit high, they knocked it down to what the actual payments would be, uh, and that's a reduction of about fifty-two hundred and seventy dollars. I projected a levy of four million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars. It was approved at four million, three hundred and five thousand, five hundred and one dollars. Uh, the difference in that is almost entirely, uh, in debt service, because I set a number, they adjusted to the carryover and all that. I don't, I didn't even try to calculate that. Um, we were under the total max levy by three hundred and forty-six dollars, which would be the difference in the submitted, at the approved number of general fund. The rate was submitted at, uh, point three four eight, and was adopted at point three four seven four.
Three, three guard clothes.
Very close. So, um, and that seventeen eighty-two is good, we are happy with that, or I am. Um, I provided there the response to get that other, to get that changed, and we should be good to go from there.
Jump the hoops.
Yeah, I, I will say, we get a lot of, I do it certainly, and, and we all do, a lot of complaining about the DLGF. Um, our field rep, uh, has been supremely helpful and supremely good to work with. And the new budget director, um, that I work with on this lit thing, has been exceptionally good to work with as well. Uh, they both were very helpful in trying to find a way to make sure we did, that we got done what we were trying to do. And, um, I thought you can ask. That's almost unheard of, cause most of the time they just reject those things. Oh, yeah, absolutely, it would, it, it very easily could have just kicked it back and said. You didn't. Sorry about your luck, you're gonna do it in twenty-five again.
Historically, that's what they would have done.
And, and that's absolutely the case, and, and very easily could have done that. And, and very easily could have done that. But they did look at the situation and look at what the circumstances were and.
Nice change.
So, they have been, I have nothing but praise for how they've been to work with on these two situations.
Yeah, any other questions on the 1782, on the budget or anything? We've normally set a year-end meeting just for any cleanup type stuff. We never know. I like to go ahead and get it set. We will cancel it if it's not needed. But if we set it now, why, then there's plenty of opportunity for it to be publicized. We were thinking of December 30th, which is a Monday, I believe, at 9:00 a.m. here. Again, well, if anybody have a problem with that, we just need four of you. I mean, there will be nothing more than probably just maybe some year-end transfers, if anything. Hopefully, we won't have to have it, but. Yeah, cleanup type. There would be no, just FYI, there's no public expression, no department head comments if there was special need. Well, I don't want it on the agenda when people think that they can do that, because we don't do that on those.
But it still needs to be advertised.
Yeah, it has to be advertised. Hopefully, maybe the paper, the newspaper will help us out on that.
Put a little funny nose in the back corner.
Okay, anything else?
I got nothing else I can come up with.
Okay.